Call to order. The City Commission meeting for November 3rd, 2020. The record show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the order of business. Mrs. Carlson, are there any changes to the order of business?
Thank you, President Decker. There's one change. We will be removing number eight A on under Buildings and Codes. We will be removing that at this time.
Okay. We will be removing eight A and for commissioners' information. And we'll be reassigning the building to the new city administrator, which I will be making an announcement later. The project will be taken over by our new city administrator. And right now, we will, because we cannot move forward with any of the building because there are some issues in, one space was rented out. So we'll put a hold on it, even though we will try to expedite the RFP and the selection. But our new city administrator will be coming onboard, and he will be assigned that task of dealing with that building. Any other changes, Mrs. Carlson?
That would be all of them. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on the amended agenda? Now I look for a motion.
Move to approve.
The motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Do we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick? Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor of the motion state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners, that you wish to discuss? I trust that the commissioners looked over the tobacco license renewals. If there's any questions with those. Complete list there. Mrs. Binstock, did everybody get theirs in on time? Okay. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Now I look for a motion.
So moved.
There are a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. You have a few items this evening at 5:00 PM. So we'll move right into the administrative finance agenda. First order up, or the item up, is the moratorium on pertaining to our retail sales of alcoholic beverages. City Attorney Wanko?
Document resolution pertaining to the moratorium for retail sales of alcoholic beverages. If you recall, in March of 2020, when the state went down to shutdown mode, the commission at that time discussed allowing retailers to sell alcoholic beverages curbside, as well as through drive-throughs for alcoholic sales. This resolution and moratorium is to reenact what the commission previously did to allow for some extra flexibility for retailers during these trying times. And the only difference that you'll see in this resolution or moratorium that was different than last time is based on a recommendation by Deputy City Administrator Carlson. We felt it was easier if we tied it to the threat level for the state so that when the threat level goes up, the moratorium stays in place. When the threat level goes down to yellow, where there's a lot more flexibility for retailers and restaurants and so forth, that the moratorium would cease. So this just allows us to have it in place so that we don't have to come back to the commission and adopt it every time that threat level changes. So that's the only significant difference. And again, this is based on additional conversations that the commission has had to allow retailers and restaurants to help them through this trying time, of course.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Wanko. Any questions for the city attorney or staff on this moratorium?
I would have one. Do we need to call out, you know, if it's in green or blue? Or is that just since it's better than yellow, we don't need to state that in this?
Good question, Commissioner Sobeluk. My understanding is yellow is still allowable. When we get into the orange and the red, that's when we're going to start to see the restrictions on businesses and restaurants. So I don't believe that the lower level threat levels are going to affect this. So we are more concerned about when they're starting to limit and shut down restaurants and the ability for retailers to have individuals coming into their establishments.
Any other questions for staff? Got the number on this. This would be Resolution 36-2020? Any further questions on 36-2020? It's 36 dash 2020. Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Does President Decker move to approve Resolution 36-2020?
There are a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla, 36 dash 2020.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mrs. Carlson, you have some SRF loan application resolutions.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Attached, you found a resolution for the Clean Water and Safe Drinking Water Act SRF loan. The resolution authorizes issuance of sales tax revenue bond to evidence the 1.5 million SRF loan. This SRF loan is for the purpose of a reused pipeline project. Ms. Director Zurov had brought the application forward before. This loan is through SRF is a 1.5% loan with a .5 administrative fee, so 2%. And with that, you have the amortization scheduled with it. And we are asking for your approval of the 1.5 million SRF loan for the purpose of the reused pipeline project. And this would be 37-2020, I believe.
That's correct. Are there any questions for Mrs. Carlson or Mr. Zurov on this SRF loan for this reused water pipe? Mrs. Zurov, we've secured all the right-of-way and...
Yeah, actually, the project is substantial. It's complete right now. So this is just a follow-up on the SRF. So everything is substantially complete. There's still a couple things with the metering system and some SCADA that needs to be done.
Okay. That'll be tied into your SCADA so you guys will be able to...
Correct.
Is that one of our purple hydrants?
Correct. Those are your purple hydrants out there.
Another purple hydrant.
One sixteen and a half we've got.
Any other questions for staff on 37 dash 2020?
Mr. President, move to approve Resolution 37 dash 2020 for the reused pipeline.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick, 37 dash 2020. Second. Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mrs. Carlson, you have a couple of contracts here, subsidy contracts for elder care and Stark Development.
Correct. Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Bringing forward after the budget has been approved, that process has been approved. And upon that, before that, there was subsidies through our committee that was brought forward. And one of them is with our elder care public transit services. And with that, through the budget process, it was decided that in the next two years, we would stay with the same subsidy amount that we've given them in the previous years. So I'm asking for approval of the next two years through '22 of $150,000 for the public transit and then $55,000 per year for the elder care transit part of it.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Are there any questions on the elder care contract?
I should state this has also been reviewed by attorney.
I know this might be just me being a little picky, but when we do this contract, we're not splitting paragraphs on pages and stuff.
Yes, I noticed that you...
Why?
Yeah.
It looks very sloppy, I'm just saying. So, right.
Because the contract was nice.
Okay. It's just the times are off and there's pages cut in half and paragraphs and...
Yeah.
As long as we have that cleaned up, so it looks, it looks nice. Hearing no questions or concerns on the elder care contract, I'd look for a motion on this item.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion or comments, questions? Go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Oh, aye. Sorry.
Even thought.
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thinking your decision.
No. I already said it. So I forgot I had to say it a second time.
Next item up is Stark Development contract. Mrs. Carlson?
Thank you. What we've done this year is when the subsidy that we put through this for the Stark Development, it was a four-year contract. We changed it to two years due to revenues and forecasting. We decided we go just two years. The other change to this contract is stated in there. It would be $750,000 annual funding paid in 12-month equal payments. And then if Section 3i, this is something that was added to it. It was a suggestion through the commission that we help somewhere along the line for an incentive part of our, to help projects go through. And what that is, is of the 750, $25,000 would be set aside to help incentivize, maybe they need help with a fire suppression or something that was in within the infrastructure part of it, that we could help with that. We wanted to see if the, when we talked about the contract, we wanted to see if there was, you know, things that we could do as the city to be able to help with that subsidy that we're giving them on an annual basis that could help beyond what Stark Development has for their programs, for some small project, like it says ADA improvements, whatever else we would need. If there's any other questions, Commissioner Frederick and Mayor Decker were also on those committee meetings. If they have anything else they would add to that. But other than that, the contract is the same except for those two items, one being two-year and then adding this three i.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions, comments, concerns? There are no questions or concerns with this contract, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion, questions for staff? There's also representative from Stark Development in the audience. Do you have any questions for them? Hearing no questions or concerns, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Mr. President, City Attorney Wanko, I serve on the board. Should I abstain?
Commissioner Oderman, I always err on the side of caution, so I would recommend that that would be prudent if you were to do that. I did have one quick question for Ms. Carlson. We had discussed previously the additional language about the $25,000 being allocated a certain way, the coming out of that fund. I don't see that in the draft that's in the packet. I don't know if that was something that was taken out or revised.
The only thing that Mr. Jellic and I looked at was the highlight, and we just took out the one sentence of that. But I can, I can go back and check on that because I do have all the original documentations. So I can make sure. I know this is the same one you reviewed, the last one you reviewed. So if there is something there that maybe both of us missed.
Yes, I think the, I think the intent was that it was expressly understood that the $25,000 comprising that fund would be derived from the 750 total. It wouldn't be in addition to the 750.
I think...
Correct.
That was... Three i touches on what it can be used for.
There was, good question, Mr. Frederick. There was just some specific language added in so that there wasn't a confusion about if that 70, if that $25,000 was in addition to the 750, but it came from the 750.
Seven fifty.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So we just want to make sure that that is included in there. I think that that was a, that was the intent of the agreement to just spell it out for everybody, so everybody understood.
Okay. And what I will do, if commissioners are okay with that, even if you okay this, I will make sure that Mr. Jellic gets the one with that same language, along with the attorney, to make sure that that is the language in there because that is the intent.
That was the intent, right, Mr. Jellic? Yes. Okay. He's nodding yes for those, you can't see him on the camera, so...
Should I amend my motion, then?
Yes, please amend it since we don't have an official vote on it.
I apologize for screwed up the vote there with that question. I would amend my motion, then, to approve this with adding the language regarding the use of where the funds are coming from for that $25,000.
And there's no additional beyond 750.
And the 750 is the cap per year, yes, so...
And I'll second it.
Any other questions or comments or concerns before we proceed with the vote? Mr. Oderman, you'll be abstaining?
I'll abstain, yeah.
Hearing no other questions or concerns, proceed with the vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is, we have a couple of job descriptions. Our HR coordinator, Nomenek, you'll be handling these.
Thank you, President Decker, commissioners. The first one is the Chief Water Reclamation Facility Operator. Public Works Director Zurov spoke to the City Commission at a work session on 10/20 regarding the need for these two positions. The first position is the Chief Water Reclamation Facility Operator, and that's for the water reclamation facility. This job description was previously approved and filled at one time, but currently is vacant and not budgeted. Due to certification requirements of the plant and recent loss of some of the staff at the plant, filling this chief position once again will help with succession planning within the plant, as well as ensuring that all regulations are met and that the plant is able to operate successfully. City staff is asking that the commission put this position back into the 2021 budget so that we can be, begin recruiting for the position now with a '21 start date.
When did this position go vacant? I don't remember why, I don't remember why we took this out.
So we had, did not have a manager over the water reclamation facility. We had one manager, a utilities, water utilities manager. We hired a chief at the time, and that did not work out at the time. That person left. And then Mr. Stack was hired as the manager of the facility. Therefore, we didn't fill at the time we needed a chief. And since then, he is now the utilities manager overseeing both departments. And we have, the only level of operator we have there is operator. We don't have seniors and we don't have chiefs out at the facility.
Thank you, Ms. Nomenek. The impact to our, our change to our 2021, Mrs. Carlson?
The impact, President Decker, is I would say it's going to be neutral. I do not feel that this position's going to be able to be filled right away due to the fact that it does take quite a bit of certification to be able to get in this position. But I do feel that if there is an amendment, we also have in the wastewater and in the treatment plant, we do have reserves that we can go forward and for the '21 budget so that we do not have to have an amendment to it, if this would be a possibility. Does that make sense? You're looking at me like it doesn't make sense.
I'm just thinking 2021, that's grateful about going forward.
That's exactly right. For the '22 budget, we'd have to look into, are we going to do that? But the restaining of the reused water revenue that's coming in. And we are now subsidizing the treatment plant of $450,000 from the sewer, which that would be, could be eliminated if we get the revenues in so that we would have funding for that instead of coming out of that subsidy. So that's what my thoughts were when I looked at it for budget-wise going forward.
Director Zurov, do you have any other additional comments?
No, I guess, you know, as I said before, it's a learning curve with trying to figure out the best operational or staff operations at the plant. And Mr. Stack is here also. I think, you know, we had, we had a manager in the water utilities. We had a manager at the plant, and we had three chiefs at one time. You know, we tried to move things around a bit to improve it. So we do have one manager now in utilities. So I think that's the way to go and then have, have the chiefs, have a chief at the plant and fill in. And that's one of the things right now, we don't have, other than Mr. Stack, we don't have a backup from Mr. Stack. And, and that was some of the issues we had at the, at the plant is, because it does, it does need to be staffed seven days a week. We didn't have the staff and the knowledge to have that ability to, you know, run it seven days a week if Mr. Stack was gone. He did a lot remote, but we don't, we don't have that backup in succession to cover. So I would trust Mr. Stack, if he wants to add any efficiencies, knows a lot more about the plant than I do. And I think we've improved the operation tremendously in the last couple of years. But we're also getting more, more wastewater coming into the plant. And at some point, you know, those operate, they continue to be more increased in the operation plus sampling. And we are also moving forward with the lab, trying to do more certification lab, do our own bacteria tests and things like that. But it takes time. We have to have the staff to be able to do that.
Do you want to add anything?
I didn't see, I believe it's Commissioner Oderman, that was your question and commission. With respect to the facility, the plant has pretty much been figured out how to run it, run it efficiently. It's just having the staff there and the knowledge, education, and certification to go ahead and continue that process. Once I became utilities manager, I started working a little bit more on the collection, the wastewater collection, as well as the water distribution side to make that more efficient because there were areas that needed more efficiency. And we're, and we're moving in that direction, even though we're also adding more people since we've lost a few through, I don't want to say attrition, but some people have left us just recently. So with that, with that in, with that in mind, it's just the fact that I only have so many hours in the day to be over at the plant, whereas then, now we go ahead and transition over to utilities. It gets to be a pretty full day. And, and kind of the interesting thing too, I know not only am I able to operate it, but I can maintain it. I know how to maintain it. There's some items in there that are fairly high, fairly high-tech. Not that anybody else can't learn it, but I only have one other individual that knows what's, knows what's going on over there. He's been with me basically since I, I got here in 2016. So to, in order to get somebody else in that particular position, especially at the plant, would allow me to go ahead and improve the efficiencies additionally over in the utility side, as well as what Shelley had indicated with respect to succession planning too, as well.
So like if we were to approve this position, what kind of recruitment timeline are you looking at? I mean, is it, is it difficult to find these people? How long, how long is it going to take?
Well...
I mean, obviously, it's, it's got to be a little difficult because we don't have them, you know, multiple chiefs right now, but...
Right. And it's, it's going to be a situation where, at least I see, it's going to have to be somebody that has previous experience, possibly previous certification. I do, there are individuals that I know in the field, it's not in North Dakota, but it's, it's in the United States, that are interested in, in possibly looking at this particular position that could be recruited in that, in that particular manner.
So you got some friends that owe you a favor that you could twist their arms?
They used to work, they used to work for me a, a long time ago.
Okay.
And that's one of the things, you know, we don't have experienced individuals here unless they've moved here. So we have to, you know, probably bring somebody that run a plant like this previously or a BNR-type facility. One of the things too, when this plant was built, it was recommended that we have at least four individuals, a staff of four to run the facility. And that's kind of what we've been using because of the seven-day-a-week that there's four, four needed. So to me, this is just one of those four staff, and we want to make it a, a cheap position so that we can get a qualified individual to run the facility.
So Gary, is that training and certification, are those things that we could work towards our staff internally getting? And what would that take to be able to do that?
Exactly. And great to help you out, but it just requires a Class IV certification. So it's a minimum of four to five years running a facility like this to get that certification. So yes, we can, you know, we have one individual out there now that we foresee him moving to that position at one point, but he hasn't been there long enough? Or does he have that certification acquired yet?
I was going to mention one other, one other thing with respect to the money that, that we're looking at, the difference. The refinery is just starting to come online with their renewable diesel. As a matter of fact, I was out there yesterday and trying to, trying to put in some flowmeter equipment so we could measure from the rail terminal that we're looking at and is, is going to be coming up in Public Works, Gary, with a fee structure. But we're, we're increasing the, the amount of flow and the amount of revenue significantly. I think I may have mentioned this maybe a year and a half ago when we went through, you know, some things that we saw coming in the future. Well, that's coming to fruition, and it's only a month off, which is, you know, that far out is, they were, they were saying it would be October of 2020, and they're kidding, November of 2020. But, you know, we're going to be increasing their, the amount of, and this is just the, this is just the base charge in sewer. We're increasing that from $23,000 a month, which was our base fee, to just a little over $42,000 a month. That doesn't include also usage, the usage fee, which is doubling. That doesn't include also usage, the usage fee, which is doubling because they're using so much more water with respect to the, the process in, in processing soybean oil. So, anyway, I just wanted to mention that.
Good job. Not to jump ahead, but the next job description, is this in the same, is this in the plant too?
No, this one, this one is in actual utilities in the, in the primarily wastewater collections.
Okay. I just noticed they graded out the same. I was like, well, this is the chief and this is...
It'd be a similar, similar, similar level of both knowledge and expertise.
Okay.
Yep.
I didn't want to jump ahead, but I thought you're up there already.
Absolutely. I can just stay up here until we get to that one too as well, so...
Well, we are getting at five o'clock, so we're going to have to cut you off.
Okay.
So, we'll vote on this first job description while it's fresh in our mind. Chief Water Reclamation, if there are no more questions, comments, or staff, we'd look for a motion.
I'll move to approve the Chief Water Reclamation position.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the Chief Water Reclamation position.
Just a quick question, I might have missed it here on the document, but what's the, the impact budget-wise?
For the, excuse me, for the industrial one?
No, for the Chief Water Reclamation Facility Operator.
I, let me look that up.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I forgot my budget.
Eighty-three, five thirty-five is what we had, had put it in for. And the same with the environmental.
Okay, I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move right into our five o'clock, our public hearing and public comments. First item up, we have a utility easement. And that'll be, well, you can stay up here, you don't have to expend energy. City Attorney Winko will be handling this utility easement, and there'll be a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Before you, you have an application for a utility easement vacation. This is a resolution for 1857 Eighth Street West. Simply, the applicant is looking to vacate a particular easement. I have reviewed the application. The engineering department has also reviewed the application. We see no issues with the applicant's request. And it does require, as Mr. Decker, it indicated, a public hearing.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Winko on 38-2020?
All the utility companies were notified and signed off on this?
Commissioner Frederick, that's part of the application process? And yes, they have.
So, just tell me on my naivety on this, so, a vacation from a utility easement, so that's saying there was area left for them, for utilities to be put in, and they're asking to put something in that space and not follow the, the, this required easement? Or help me understand?
Sure. Commissioner Sobeluk, at one time, there was an easement granted on this particular parcel of property. What the applicant is requesting, that the easement be vacated so that it no longer exists, so that they can utilize the property in a, in a fashion in which they so choose. The, the application process requires, as Commissioner Frederick indicated, all of the other utility companies to sign off on the application just to make it, make it aware that this is being vacated. The, the actual easement itself is relatively small in the grand scheme of things. So, it's, it's basically allowing the, the property owner to utilize the property in a different fashion without the easement existing.
And it's non-use, so that's why?
Correct.
If it was in use, then we, they couldn't vacate it, so...
So, there's nothing there?
There's nothing there, yeah.
And then we're just saying, they're asking that they can use it so that nothing can come in in the future?
Right, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Not this is a public hearing, open up the public hearing. If anybody has any concerns or questions on the utility easement vacation at 1857 Eighth Street West, please come forward, state your name. Let us know your concerns or your questions on this utility easement vacation. And also, if you're watching online, you can call in 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Again, if there's anyone from the public that has any concerns with this utility easement vacation at 1857 Eighth Street West in Dickinson, North Dakota, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns or your questions. Watching online, 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns and hearing nothing online, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions for staff? Not, I'd look for a motion on this. And this is Resolution 38-2020.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 38-2020.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk of 38-2020.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Now, Mr. Josephson, we're ready for you. We have a public hearing for Chapter 39 Amendment. The first item up is the West Valard Overlay District.
Excuse me a moment. I have to, told I need to move the slides, so... Well, here we go. Okay, thank you, President Decker. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Steve Josephson. We have before you the first one, the first one is a proposed amendment to the West Valard Overlay District. And this was something that was approved by the City Commission a number of years ago. And the idea was that there is a fair chunk of, of, of housing within this area that is zoned, that's zoned commercial, which would normally make it non-conforming if the case, if there, if this was, if this was destroyed or damaged beyond 50% of its, of its replacement value, they would not be able to build back. That, in it, one of the changes is that apparently somewhere along the way that inadvertently was, was, was changed, this would restore that, this would restore that language. If you've been through that area, there, there is some substantial housing within there. It's in good shape that, you know, this, and this was meant to make those, to make those conforming uses. So, this would just change that back to the original intent. The other changes would be, would be to allow for the existing residential, those existing residential properties that are on, on commercial zoning to convert portions of it or all of it into, into, to allow for commercial uses. It'd be more walkable ones, similar to what was in the downtown commercial overlay dis, overlay district, to try to encourage, connect, you know, allow walkable businesses and to connect to the, to the business district that's over on West, on West Valard. Both the, both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions for Steve on this overlay district? This is ordinance 1705, I'm correct? 1705. Are there any concerns, questions? For Mr. Josephson before we move into the public hearing? Hearing no concerns or questions, Mr. Josephson, I'll move to open up the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to come forward and has any concerns with the West Valard Overlay District, ordinance 1705, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns. You may also call into 701-456-7006 if you have any questions or concerns with this overlay district. Anyone have any concerns? Any concerns from the public with the West Valard Overlay District? Again, this is ordinance 1705. Seeing no one has any concerns and hearing none online, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions for Mr. Josephson on the West Valard Overlay District? Not, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Oderman to approve 1705.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions, concerns? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. This is the first reading, so there will be a second reading. So, if the general public, you have any concerns, please bring them forward to either Commissioners or Mr. Josephson. The next item up is accessory dwelling units, and this is in the ordinance 1706. Mr. Josephson?
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners, Steve Josephson. This is a proposed change to the, to the, you know, to the, to the zoning ordinance. This is based on a recommendation from the, you know, from the comprehensive plan. And it would allow for, it would permit the building of a smaller accessory dwelling unit on a residential property. This would apply to all residential zoning districts in the agricultural district with the exception of our one, of our one zoning. As you can see, we have a summary of this, and this would not be having two rental properties. The property owner would be required to live, live in either the accessory residence or the, or the primary one. The minimum size of a, of a, of an accessory dwelling unit would be 400 square feet, and the maximum would be 900 square feet. They would, they would need to meet all of the requirements in terms of lot coverage and impervious, and impervious surface, would need to match the, the building that's, the building that's there. The accessory dwelling unit cannot be sold off or detached by deed or by a condo plat. There would be a limit of one of these per, per lot. It would also limitation that the, it could not be used as a, as, as like short-term, as short-term housing. The rental, rental on it would have to be at least 28, 28 days. And as stated before, they would have to meet all the development, all the city's ordinances, regulations and, and requirements. And this would go through permitting, this would go through permitting just like any other, any other structure. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as, as, as is, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions for Mr. Josephson on 1706?
Yeah, Mr. President, where do we sit as a city right now in regards to accessory dwelling units?
Except, the only place it would be permitted would be in commercial. And it would be inside of a commercial structure, and it would be, it would be through, it would be an administrative action. That would be if some, if somebody worked for that employer, they could create a portion of it for that, for that person to, to live in. And once that person set, left there, they would have to, they would have to close that out. So, the city currently does not, the city of, currently does not, does not permit accessory dwelling units. This is something that is allowed across, across the, across the nation. They're known as granny flats. There are some other names for, you know, there's some other names for them, for them too. But currently, the city does not permit them in residential zoning districts.
So, are these only for additions or like an existing basement that's converted to an apartment?
You could convert an exist, you could convert an existing basement. You could also, you could also attach something onto the house or separate it out. Or you could take a garage and you could build, you could convert that, or you could build a separate structure on the property.
But don't we already have those all over Dickinson?
If we do, they are not permitted.
Well, and I guess, I guess why would someone need a permit to do that? I guess the, the question I'm asking is, why is the city even interested in like looking into basically regulating what somebody does with their private property when we don't do it already and it's being done everywhere? Like, why, why are we interested in adding another, like administrative thing that we have to oversee?
Because they're not currently permitted.
I'm a chair...
They're not, they're not...
But are they against the law?
Where are they allowed everywhere? That's what I'd like to know.
Well, but there, there are people that rent out basement apartments and stuff all over the town, all over town. People have been doing it for, forever, Jason.
And what I'm thinking of is like when I go out of town, I do Airbnb. That's part either a plat above a garage or something like that. And what if someone around here wants to...
No, that's one stipulation, it has to be long-term.
Well, that's what I was asking.
Twenty-eight days, yeah, is the minimum.
It's, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, excuse me, and Commission. The, the idea behind this is it's not only affordable housing, it also gives you the ability to do that if you want that, want to. We have had a number of issues throughout this community's history where we have non-conforming duplex. You talk about the, the issue of finishing the basement. Right now, you can, you can get a permit to add another kitchen if you're going to become a chef or you want to, whatever. You can, you can do that, but it's not a separate unit. And a separate unit, I believe we have someone from the Building Department here, they can clarify it if I'm misspeaking. But it needs separate air handling facilities, it needs separate utility to have it as a, a separate unit. And so, what we've had happen in this community for a number of years are illegal, if you want to call it, non-conforming improvements to homes that don't meet our zoning. And maybe, in most cases, probably don't meet any of our building code requirements. So, they wind up being an unsafe situation as well.
So, so maybe that, maybe that's, maybe I didn't ask the question clearly. So, I mean, is this a, like a new adjustment to the existing property that we're talking about? I, I guess what I'm referencing is, you know, if you buy a house right now and there's an apartment in the basement, that would be an accessory dwelling unit? You can't rent that out?
Technically, it's not legal.
May, it, maybe. The answer would be maybe. You could rent it out probably because no one would be in the permitting process to review that unless you, unless they're required to as financial surety or something. But, you know, if you're going to build a new home, you can build a new home, have a plan for an accessory structure on the site. If you have a, a home, as Stephen said, it needs to meet all of the coverage requirements, all the setback requirements, just like you do with a regular home. So, if you can't meet that, that takes out probably 75% of the older lots in Dickinson from being able to do that.
Well, and I guess I'm asking these questions because I, I'm shocked to find out that the house that I owned for 10 years here in Dickinson, I was breaking the law for 10 years because I was renting out a basement apartment.
I don't know if it meets the code.
Chief Dossinger, I don't know if you're going to arrest me or not.
I don't know if it meets the...
I mean, like, I guess that's what, I guess the, that's the concern I have is, are we going to have, by passing this, are, are we going to have a bunch of people in Dickinson that are immediately in violation?
What, what's happened, John? It's like you're there, it's been great, it's an older house. It was probably grandfathered, and nobody ever said anything because that's how it's always been. But let's say you decided to remodel that house?
Yeah.
And you wanted to do the same thing? Now, you have to have a separate heater and air conditioning unit down there. It has to have a separate electrical service, it has to have a, I mean, it's got, you can't no longer do that once you update it.
So, you know...
And that's building code, I mean, that's not the city, that's building code.
But if we're interested in affordable housing... But if we're interested in affordable housing in Dickinson, there's nobody that can afford to do that to their house and make sure that that accessory unit is affordable for the person that rents it.
I mean, we've had situations where a place like yours is burnt down and they go to rebuild it, and they can't rebuild it that same way. I mean, but that's building code, that has nothing to do with the city, so.
And, but I think that's a, I think that's a separate issue. I mean, I heard affordable housing mentioned, and if we're going to be talking about affordable housing, and we're going to require, you know, separate HVAC units and things like that, you're never going to be able to add something like to this, to a house and make it affordable, to where you can actually make it watch from a dollars and cents standpoint.
Well, I think Mr. Bush brought up when we were talking about this at Planning and Zoning, that in Colorado, the average price of these things is about $250,000 or something.
Okay.
When they do them in Colorado.
Okay.
So, I agree with you, I mean, I'm just saying that we've never had a policy that says people that have these basements that they're renting out until they need a building permit for something, and then that's when that gets caught.
Yeah.
I think the idea as presented originally in Planning and Zoning was to allow for, say, somebody that's established to bring their mother or their father onto the property, but they have their own separate area. I agree with you, affordability, I mean, if they, more power to them, if they have the money, Commissioner Frederick's point, if you want to dump $200,000, add on to your house so somebody can live there.
Yeah.
And maybe it's, and there are houses in town that have separate dwellings that were permitted, but they're newer, and I agree with you. There are, if you go, just walk around campus, there's many a basement that were rented out, and that probably did not conform. But this would just allow them to get it permitted, add on, have that accessory dwelling, if they find it to be affordable. The one thing that we did remove in Planning and Zoning is originally this had R1 in it, and the biggest opposition was to having this in R1. So R1 was removed, so you'll see R2, R3, and we're all residential, and so.
And, Mr. President, if I could add, you did a good job summarizing it. It also, we not necessarily always look at what the costs are to do things, because if we did that, you know, half the developments we deal with and half of the other things, it just gives us an opportunity to legitimize possibly some things in the future. It's probably not going to solve some of the examples that we're given that we have around town, it's probably not, because it's not going to be affordable and they probably can't do it. So, it's an option, and it is pretty widely done across the nation. I mean, it's done in resort communities, it's done in just regular communities. Not every block has one, you know, in any of those communities, so it kind of has to be the right fit. It's just bringing out something in a palette that allows us to have something else happen if it works in our system, and if it's affordable, obviously, for the people that are doing it.
Yeah, I guess I'm just worried about the devil possibly dwelling in the details here. I mean, and I'm just asking these questions because, I mean, these have existed.
So I do have a question kind of leading off of that. With R2, or the other Rs, not R1 though, would R2 already be multifamily dwelling allowed?
It's more of a duplex.
Okay, and so would this not, if you already are zoned in something that can have a multifamily dwelling, couldn't you just do this without this addition to the code?
Well, you, the code, actually, the building standards in terms of parking and some other things are, and the square footage and so on would be different for, it would be different for having multifamily than it would be for having single family and then another, it's a smaller single family dwelling on that lot.
And single-family homes are allowed in all of those multifamily districts too, so if you were right behind an apartment complex, let's say, you built a home, you could obviously come in and get a specialty, or get approval to do this, to build an accessory structure behind you or next to you.
Without this addition to the code?
No.
Or we'd need this to do that?
We would need it.
And I can't speak for Mr. Hadley from the city end. I know at the county, I've had a couple of inquiries just this past year where somebody said, "Well, I came from this state, you know, I have, if I buy a single-family house here, can I put up a smaller one? Can I put up a smaller one for my father, my mother, you know, whatever?" And the county did approve, did approve, you know, did add this in as a use in their
But in the county, you're typically dealing with an acre or more too, not a 12,000 square foot lot, or an 8,000 square foot lot, or.
There are some smaller ones in some of the existing subdivisions, you know, there's some, there are some smaller ones. But I'm just giving that as an example, you know, that I've had inquiries, I've had inquiries of people wanting to do the same thing.
And we've also had them at the city. I mean, the city, there's been, you know, kind of a rash in the last year and a half, two years of people moving back home, whether it be elderly or kids. And so we, you know, we've kind of welcomed that, we've done some developments that actually promoted and allowed people to divide land up so their families could come back home. And so this is an opportunity for that as well, and I have fielded probably in the last eight months, six inquiries on this.
So I guess my question is, does current code expressly prohibit these, or it just doesn't permit them?
It permits you to add to your kitchen, it permits you to add to your house, it doesn't permit you to add another unit.
Okay, but does it prohibit it?
The what?
Does it prohibit an accessory dwelling?
Well, if you wanted to do detached, for sure it would prohibit that.
Okay, so I mean, that is.
If you wanted to build one in your backyard, it would not be allowed.
It would not be permitted.
So, if you're adding on to your house, especially if it's for a family member, I don't know that you would need to even have this, but if you wanted to have.
See, and I guess, I think that's what I'm getting at.
If you had some random person that you wanted to convert your garage to, to rent it out to, I think that's a different story, but.
Because I guess that's what I'm getting at, is that if it's not against the law right now, for certain types of these that are outlined on this third slide, if you can do those and get a permit for those right now, why would we go over and, like, why would we go further and like lay something out in city code that, maybe I'm not being clear, but like, I don't understand why we're going through adding this additional thing if it's not prohibited, and we could permit certain types of these things right now, why add something additional to code?
Well, it is prohibited, and I remember when I first came here, going out, you know, with somebody from code, you know, from the Building Department and seeing, or being shown plans too of where somebody had a house and they wanted to put a separate door on, and it was clear that the door, it was to a unit on a single-family home that did not connect, it did not connect into the house that was being, that was being built. So yes, it is prohibited, right?
But like, but I can put an addition on my house right now, I can get a permit for that. And why does the city care? If I'm being lawful in who's living in my house and what is being conducted in my house, why does the city care what's going on in that addition? Whether I'm renting it out or not?
If it's a separate unit, they'll want to know for taxes, for assessing purposes, they'll want to know it's a separate unit. And then I believe the building code requires if it's going to be an accessory unit, a lot of places use this as someone builds a 3,800 square foot home, and they raise their kids, they raise their family, and now they want to live in a 1,200 square foot home because they really don't want to maintain it. They can rent that out, so they can do it. The way Stephen has it crafted was that they can move into the 1,200 square foot home and rent out the larger homes. So it works both ways, and they're functional separate units.
I mean, yeah, if you're going to add on and give them full access to the rest of your house, this is not what this is. It's basically you'd add 12, let's say, 2, 500 square foot on to your house, and it would have a separate entrance, and they couldn't get into the other part. It'd have its own bathroom and kitchen, and you would have no access to the rest of the house.
But I go back to, why does the city care? Because like, well, but from the assessment standpoint, I mean, they could assess that value, that renter, there's no additional taxable liability on behalf of that renter. If the, I mean, we could go and assess that property value, based, I mean, why do we, I don't know.
I think that, you know, I think what we have though in town to answer that is we have a bunch of unsafe situations that have happened throughout the years, and so the answer would be to limit our liability and everyone's liability so that doesn't perpetuate into the future. You know, we do have, I could go point to, I'm sure the mayor could point to 100, I could go point to 20 of them probably that I know of right now, that are not safe to live in. So what we're, the reason that we want to address it is not only to provide that opportunity for people to do that if they can, if they can afford it, if it fits into the standards that we're talking about, but also to do it in a safe manner. I'm going to just say that there's a lot of them that are not safe, and that doesn't mean that they aren't occupied, it doesn't mean that people aren't utilizing them, it doesn't mean that we be, on the assessing that we have, it's shown as that, but I'm sure our Building Department has walked through a number of them that are very unsafe. I mean, no egress windows, for one thing, a lot of them, probably 90%, unless they go through their process, don't have egress windows, which if you have a fire, they can't get out, and that's kind of a problem, especially if it's someone that's not in your family that you're renting to. So there's a lot of liabilities that are also covered in that, but it's just an opportunity to do something a little different than what we've always done, I guess, is the way to look at it. And it is pretty widely known and widely used throughout the country. I mean, not, doesn't necessarily exclusively in one section of the country or whatever, it is pretty well all over, it's just an opportunity.
Well, and maybe you can explain this, maybe Attorney Wanko can. What's the city's liability if my house is unsafe? Like, why are we worried about private property owners' liability?
Commissioner Oderman, I think where I see this coming into play is probably more so in building and codes, and Mr. Schwint isn't here to answer this question, but from what I understand, certain requirements obviously would have to be met, building permits would have to be issued, and there are certain requirements that would have to be met under the building code to address the concerns that Mr. Hadley is talking about with regard to safety. So I agree with you in that there are certain things that the city doesn't necessarily need to worry about with regard to liability, but the city does have a requirement to make sure that what is constructed is constructed pursuant to the city's building code, and I understand the concern about having certain restrictions or requirements of what property owners can and cannot do on their property. It's the same concept that we have when someone comes in and wants to build a fence. We don't necessarily care that you build the fence, but we care that you're doing it pursuant to city code and you're meeting all of those requirements. So I think that there's probably more of a safety concern that that structure that is being built is suitable for someone to live in, that it has the necessary, you know, egress windows so someone isn't going to get, you know, hurt. That's more where I see the concern, is that, yes, the city isn't going to be, we're not, the purpose is we're not here to police and monitor a homeowner's liability, but we, again, we do as the city have an obligation to make sure that what is constructed is pursuant to city code.
Yeah, that's fair.
It kind of promotes public health and safety and welfare, and that's kind of what we're all here to do. There's a number of issues, you know, throughout the country, whatever, the liability on your part, I mean, on whoever's part that owns the particular property that needs to be upgraded, if you don't do that, then I guarantee you do have a liability for those people.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, I'm not an attorney, don't want to be, but I guarantee you that you're accepting that liability by allowing that and charging for that to happen in, on your property. So irregardless of when it happened, or, you know, really, you're right, it doesn't really have anything to do with the city at that point, but we don't want to perpetuate that, is I guess part of our stance.
I'll be honest, other than a mother-in-law addition, in 25 years of building in Dickinson, I've never had a request for one of these.
Okay.
Ever.
Well, and I think, I think that's what I'm saying, is like, are we creating something that like, we don't necess, like, why can't we take this, like, if it comes to us, if it comes to Walter or Leonard, why can't they deal with it on a case-by-case basis? Why are we, you know, putting it into our city code?
We do have to have a guide of some sort. I mean, whoever that is that walks into our offices, we do have to have some sort of a guide, it can't just be, "I think it's a great idea, and yeah, that looks like it'll work." I really think we want, I mean, we can pare this down or change it or do whatever you want to do to it, but we do need, if we're going to do it, we need to have something that addresses it.
Because I mean, I think the detached mother-in-law house, I mean, or even like, let's say my parents, I had a half-acre lot, and I had a spot in the back corner of my lot that I wanted to build a house for my parents when they retire, and maybe they move into Dickinson. And like that, I mean, I can definitely see where that's something that we need to have enshrined in code, but like, you know, this other stuff, I just, I don't, I don't know if that's a road we want to go down, because all of a sudden we're regulating stuff that I don't know if the city has business regulating. But I mean, that's, I'm one voice on this commission, so.
I mean, nobody, I can tell you at Planning and Zoning, nobody had any opposition to renting to a family member or a mother-in-law or something, but the opposition came in was putting an apartment in your house, and now you're renting it to random people, and there's traffic coming in, you know, especially in R1 zones, you know, where multifamily's not allowed technically, so.
So what do we do if we pass this and like, that continues to happen? Sorry.
No, that's fine. I'm just thinking of, okay, so obviously, we all have an expiration date, so say you do build a dwelling, a separate dwelling for your mother-in-law or mother, and they pass away, then what are you going to do with that? So then this kind of gives them the option that then.
This would allow them to rent it to somebody else.
Right, so that's what I like about this. It kind of gives a little succession planning to, if you do invest some money in that, then you can rent it out down the road.
Or your child that has the underwater basking weaving.
Yeah, whatever.
So, I mean, it wasn't the family members, it was more just the non-family renters. That was the concern.
So what do we do with the existing then? Like, Chief Dossinger have to start driving by the houses over by the college?
Well, I mean, I look at a, I look at a house that I own, and on the assessor, it says it's a two-family conversion. I don't even know what that means. I mean, it's basically a rented basement that, we used to be, I mean, my kids live there now, my boys live there now, so we don't rent the basement to anybody else, but I don't know what a two-family conversion means on the city assessor's website. Do you guys know?
I don't.
Nope.
So is that, I mean, that's what I'm saying, is that something we've allowed in the past, a two-family conversion?
Well, I mean, it sounds like, and that's, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is we have allowed these even though that they haven't been expressly permitted, but we have allowed them.
Well, you know, the other thing, Commissioner Oderman, is we have changed codes over time, and it's possible that this could have been something permitted in a previous code, but if you look at our code today, if you look at our code today, this isn't, this isn't in there. It's not, you know, if you go through our use table, our matrix, this is not listed as a permitted, as a permitted use.
And at one time, those dwellings we all speak of probably were permitted at one time, way back before everything was refined, fire codes were refined, but that's, that is one thing, we do have a new position coming on in the city, building codes enforcement, right? And that is an item, if we so wish, to enforce, that, you know, they can, they can take a crack at and find out, but it, I don't think there's a city that has a university or a college that does not have that type of dwellings around them. You can go to NYU, UND, any of those, and there is going to be, that once were residential houses, that there's probably six people living in them.
And, you know, and typically, I would imagine, even with our code, unless it's damaged more than 50% of the value, I mean, you don't have to bring it to the current code, so. So I mean, if it got to grandfathered in in 1958, I mean, it's fine, you know, until something happens, until it gets destroyed by fire. happens, until it gets destroyed by fire or...
Or someone purchased it. I mean, a lot of the ones we can go around and point to, that we could leave this meeting and go and say, oh yeah, that one over there and this one and that one, were probably done on the night shift or the weekend shift as far as being improved from a basement that was unfinished and which, you know, I mean, building and codes obviously weren't, they weren't involved with a permit, no one asked them. We're kidding ourselves if that doesn't happen, because it did, and it happened for many years, obviously, because there's a lot of older ones around in town. So I don't know that we can explain the past part of it, why we have some and why they're there. I don't know that really matters at this point. I just think legitimizing it, if, if there's people that can do it, can meet their requirements, do want to do it and meet our code, from my standpoint, my recommendation would be, why wouldn't we want to allow that as a, as a use or an option for everybody in the city? That's kind of why we brought it to the table, because there has been this moving target of things, and, you know, adding to your house, this has nothing to do with adding, adding on to your house. We realize you can add on to your house and put another three bedrooms on and bring mom and sister and whoever you want into your home. This is a completely different scenario.
Well, and I really appreciate like what you guys said there about the historical context of having different codes and things like that and how this one might not fit in there. I mean, that's, that's good, good context to have, so. And I appreciate you guys, I'm sure the questions were frustrating, but I got to keep you guys on your toes.
That's why we're sure.
Yeah.
We have an answer most of the time.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Not, I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone has any concerns with the accessory dwelling ordinance 1706, please come forward, state your name. Also, if you're watching online and you want to call in, 701-456-7006.
President Decker and commissioners, I just want to clarify for Commissioner Odom that this is a special use permit, no matter how it goes.
No.
So I just wanted to clarify that, is it not?
No.
It doesn't have to go, you're, you're talking about doing this without a special use to the planning and zoning then?
Yeah, it would be just a permit.
Yeah. Just a standard permit?
Yeah.
I think once they removed the R1, that did away with the...
I know, we talked about a special use at planning and zoning, but that got pulled out of there too, I think, so.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any concerns with accessory dwelling ordinance 1706? Hearing there are no concerns or comments on 1706. I don't hear nothing on the phone, so. Close the public hearing. Any further questions for staff? Now I'd look for a motion on 1706.
President, I move to approve first reading of ordinance number 1706.
We have a motion to approve the first reading of 1706 by Commissioner Walla.
Well, seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Soboluk. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing now will go ahead and vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Soboluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Odom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the first reading of 1706. Next item up, we have, find it here, we have an underground mining overlay district. Mr. Josephson.
Thank you, President Decker. Commissioners, Steve Josephson. And again, this is a, this was something that came out of a comprehensive plan recommendation. What this would be is it would be the creation of an underground mining overlay district. This would apply primarily in the Lehigh area, in the, in the extraterritorial zone. Here's the area. And the idea is to prevent, is to, is to try to protect people from building over underground mines with the situ, with situation where you could have subsidence, where you build a structure and, and it falls in because it's built over an underground mine. We base this upon a, an ordinance that the city of Beulah had, had passed, there had been a number of issues there where, where subsidence had occurred. What this ordinance would specifically do is if, if someone, if someone determines that it would, well, it would limit the kind of use that would be built over an underground mine to an agr, non-occupied agricultural structure, and would also limit the location of, of uses that would have, that would have, in terms of setbacks, that would have, that would have, you know, people in them. Residential dwellings would be set back a minimum of 500 feet from, from those areas that were determined to be underground mines. Other areas that would, that would, you know, where people would gather, public buildings, schools, places of worship, and so on, would be set back a minimum of 300 feet from the identified underground mine area. Both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions on ordinance 1707, which is an underground mining overlay?
President Decker, I just have a question. Does that include utilities and/or, you know, because our, the city's landfill is there, is that, would that consider if we built a shop or something else in that area or pipeline? Would this have any restrictions on that?
You would have to determine in that area whether or not there was actually an underground mine.
Obviously, there has been and is underground mines in that area. We documented it around the landfill, so I just, you know, don't want to restrict us from expanding our landfill or installing our, our pipeline.
This is only for structures.
Okay, all structures.
This is only for structures. If it, if it turns out that you're, it would be located over an underground mine, then it would limit it to non, to non-resi, to non-resi, non, well, any non-agricultural buildings would be prohibited.
So a shop, the landfill would be prohibited?
Well, I mean, you would, you wouldn't build it over a mine.
It would depend upon where it's located.
Yeah.
Well, but it has to be over 300 feet from an underground mine?
Or it would have, yes.
I think that if you look at the map, and I know it's hard to see, but I don't think the, the undergrounds are by the landfill.
They've been identified in that area just to the north and around the landfill, so I just want to, you know, we have identified underground mines, especially on that property just to the north that we previously had looked at, as underground mines, and along that road, there's been underground mines that have been filled in the past.
Well, if it's been filled, if it's been filled, you do a study, don't you, to make sure that the, that the ground underneath it is going to be secure enough that the mine won't, that the building won't collapse?
I guess that's what I'm getting at. What kind of restrictions are we going to have to go through, a long-term study to determine which mine has been filled and what distance of, from our public building to that mine? I guess that's what I'm trying to comprehend here.
It doesn't show, on this map, it doesn't show anything about around the landfill.
Right to the west of the landfill, I don't know what, as long as we're okay at the landfill, I guess that's...
Yes, the landfill's not even in the red line, or is that the...
Well, that's in the ETZ.
That's in the ETZ.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask, it falls outside the ETZ, Steve, the landfill does.
I thought the landfill was in, oh, it is. So it is. Yeah, it's in the county.
It's in the county.
It's in the county, so that wouldn't apply.
So has the county passed anything like this?
No, the county has not, no.
Your landfill's outside the ETZ.
Yeah, so you're actually in the county, and if you look at where the landfill is, those yellow areas are the ones that were identified by the State Department of Abandoned, by the, by the Public Service Commission's abandoned mine, excuse me a second, turn that off, just made it dark just as I was reading, the abandoned mine lands division.
Yeah, I just...
So if you can see that, the yellow area is the areas that have generally been identified as the areas of underground mines, and landfill would not be in that area.
I understand that, Steve, but we have done a lot of research on that area around the landfill and just north, and there are underground mines in there, and I know just the tip of the landfill is in the ETZ, but that area just north of there is one, one area we had looked at purchasing too at one point. So I just want to make sure, you know, what the restrictions are going to be for if there's any expansion of the land. That's all I want to see. If we expand landfill to the north, we will be in the ETZ.
The land, and the landfill, landfill is not considered a structure.
I understand a landfill is not considered...
Okay, gentlemen, gentlemen.
Yeah.
This is getting, getting tabled. Mrs. Carlson, you will get all your staff together, they will, you will coordinate that they are on the same page and that all their concerns are addressed.
That would be a good idea. Thank you.
And not turning into the county.
I apologize, but I understand a landfill's not a structure, but if we did any structure, all I was trying to determine is what restrictions we would have on...
Right, and we will address that, Mr. Zerl. Okay, thank you. Okay? Can I get a motion to table this?
Motion to table this until staff can review it again.
Second.
We have a motion to table by Mr. Frederick, seconded by Mrs. Soboluk. All in favor of tabling this subject, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. 1707 is tabled. Mr. Josephson, you have a public zoning and district standards.
Yes, thank, thank you, President Decker. Commissioners, this is a, this would be an amendment to actually apply development standards in the public zoning district. I think we found this out when the courthouse expansion, you know, when the courthouse expansion occurred, they had, they had to rezone the public zoning district. Currently in the public zoning district, there are no, there are no setback standards. Public buildings are allowed in a number of, they're permitted in a number of, of commercial and industrial districts, and they would have to meet the setback requirements in there, but there are none in the public district. This, this is really meant to protect, to protect residential development around those areas, so there would not be setbacks unless it was immediately adjacent to residential development or residential, a residential zoning district, that's when this would apply. And also if it was in a residential area, if there are any areas like shops or storage or repair areas, that those would be shielded, you know, those would be shielded from the residential, from the residential properties. We looked at a, an ordinance from Bend, Oregon, and based it upon, based it upon this, so the idea in terms of these setback requirements and height requirements is to try and protect, protect any existing residential development from, you know, from negative impacts of, you know, of, of public buildings. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
This time, I'm not aware that we are planning on building anything, but I understand your concern.
Even if the county did, I guess.
Oh, with the county?
Even if they did, yeah.
All right. I'm not aware they're going to build something else. Are there any concerns? I do have one question for Mrs. Wanko. Since we tabled the other item, does the ordinance just carry over if that doesn't get assigned a number?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So this will be 1707. So this item, for the general public, basically if the city or the county plans on building any infrastructure, will have some setback requirements.
That's correct, only if it's adjacent to residentially zoned property.
President Decker?
Yes.
And I did ask this, I think when you first brought this up, Steve, this will, does this include all utilities? Is that what, this, that you get, you...
Depends on the zoning district, and actually utilities in the public zoning district are supposed to be approved, approved through a special use permit. But no, if the, if the utilities have been developed in one of those other zoning districts, it doesn't apply to that.
I know when you first brought up the planning board, I believe I did come up and ask, you said utilities are going to be affected, so I'm, I'm assuming if, if I bring in, if we bring in a small lift station or something else, that that, this zoning regulation doesn't affect that?
It would.
Well, you would have to meet a 20, if, if it's surrounded by, by residential, residential zoning and residential, residential development, then you would have to meet those setback requirements. But if you look at what the setback requirements are, that currently if they built on the properties that were either commercially zoned or industrially zoned, it's, it's about the
Again, I just don't want us to limit ourselves to infrastructure, needed infrastructure in residential areas that we might needing to purchase more area.
Well, perhaps, as President Decker had said for the previous one, perhaps we ought to table this and you and Walter and I can meet and discuss this and clarify that.
And I do, I didn't get to the last planning board meeting, but I was at the first one you brought it up, and I just, you know, want to make sure, because if, if that's the case, if we didn't fit in infrastructure, we would have to buy more, more area to put in that infrastructure. What effect does that have on that residential area?
I'm just wondering, are variance allowed?
You could do it, well...
If you're limited, let's just say with Sims. Sims is going to be a project, we all know that's coming down the road. We might have to redo the lift station.
What's the zoning on that? It depends on the...
Well, there's residential on one side, commercial on the other side, so...
Okay, but if they haven't, if their piece of property hasn't been rezoned to public, if it hasn't been rezoned to public, then it's going to be whatever the setbacks are for the current zoning district. So say that piece of property is on a property that's zoned general commercial, it's going to be whatever the setback requirements are for the general commercial zoning district. This is just for one zoning district, the P zoning, the public zoning district.
It has nothing to do with ownership. It has to do with zoning. And so the zoning, we have very few areas actually, with lift stations and whatnot, we just looked at one today, and it's split zoning in the ETZ between the commercial and agricultural. So it, it's all based on zoning. So the public zoning designation, which you have not a lot of on a lot of your facilities, that is where this applies. So it really doesn't apply to most of the facilities that you have. It's more for a large development on public property that would impact residential or non-compatible adjacent landings. That's what this is addressing.
It's not, it's not the use, this is for the zoning district itself.
Okay. Clear is my, clear is my...
I think we should table this one as well. I mean, when, when this comes to planning and zoning, a lot of the commissioners on there, when they hear, you know, staff recommends approval, we assume all this is worked out, so I think we should...
Motion?
Move to table. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Odom to table, with a second by Commissioner Frederick. Mrs. Carlson, you will be charged with making sure that everybody is clear on this.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further discussion on the public zoning district before we table it? We have a motion by, like I said, by Commissioner Odom to table, with a second by Commissioner Frederick. There's no further discussion. All in favor of tabling this motion, I mean, this item, signify it by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. This item is tabled.
Thank you.
And I think that is it for...
Sorry to miss you.
Yeah, the public hearings this evening. We will move into public comments, not on the agenda. If you are online or in the audience, you may come forward, state your name, please, and let us hear your concerns.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. We have a case, and we just...
Could you please state your name?
My name is Heidi Garcia, and my husband is Eddie Garcia. And we have a case, our English is very limited, but we write a letter in English, and I don't know, you want to read our case?
You, I mean, you can go ahead and, and then we'll distribute that. Um, you, I mean, you can go ahead and, and then we'll distribute that, we'll get, we'll get a copy of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you, um, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Garcia, did you present this to anybody within the city, our city?
Yes.
To who, to whom?
He just, uh, request for a permit here in the city.
From building and codes?
Yes.
Or building? I see in here you went to Bismarck to get authorization. Were you told to go to Bismarck? Mr. Duker, do you aware of this? Can you, you come to the mic?
President Decker, Commissioners, Mr. Garcia was instructed to contact, uh, Bismarck for asbestos. He took a garage, it don't have a system. And, uh, the concern here is this Marsha could probably fill us in on engineering side of it. There was a curb and gutter put in and the communication probably wasn't done properly so that he wasn't aware that it was going to be built in. But, uh, as far as everything else goes, I was involved in this from the beginning to facilitate a permit for Mr. Garcia for a detached garage. That's kind of what that all sums it up to be. Main concern is the curb and gutter that was put in, so his driveway was no longer accessible off Highway twenty-two. So, the garage, for current code, when the garage came down and a new one is going to be put up, he cannot have the garage facing west, so it does have to face south. And that's because it's in the safety triangle, division triangle. He can put the curb and gutter back in, or the driveway, I should say, back in, but he can't build a garage facing west.
And was that relayed at the time of the permit?
Uh, the permit is, actually was just given recently. We were not going to issue the permit until we were clarified on all the issues as far as the garage and the curb and gutter. So, this has been a ongoing thing for a couple months, till we finally got the garage permit resolved.
And I can share, President Decker and Commission, on the issue with the driveway closure. Engineering staff did get ahead of the game, so to speak, in this discussion, working with the building department. And so, unfortunately, their driveway was closed before it should have been, and that is on engineering staff. Uh, we've talked with Mrs. Garcia a couple times on trying to, um, resolve that, uh, even offering either to put the driveway back the way it was originally, but we wanted to share with them that with the construction of this new garage in the site triangle, it would have to then come back out and the driveway be placed to the south and offered to use the funds for replacement towards helping with some of the construction, that same dollar amount on the new driveway. So, just trying to work with them on that. But, um, engineering staff did drop the ball with communication as far as closing the driveway before they were far enough into the project for that.
So, when conversations started in regards to the remodeling of the garage, did you guys know that he was going to demolish it?
Yeah, and, uh, and, uh, we gave him the okay to do that at the time after I met on the property with Jim Thorpe, another building inspector. So, that was, that was relayed.
So, you guys did know he was going to demolish it, but?
But we did not permit a new one because that was not clarified yet exactly what he was going to do. So, then that, once that approval was given to demolish, we did explain that we wanted to close it up and I have notes of that and stuff, so that he'd have to come in from the south.
So, so it was communicated that he would have, if he built a new garage, that he would have to come in from the south?
It was communicated.
Does he have it in writing?
I have emails here and.
In regards to?
But, uh, concrete curb and gutter side does not fall on the building department. I'm trying to facilitate permit, so that was my side of the whole.
And engineering was trying to work with building department on this project and they brought forward what they were trying to do and, uh, we dropped the ball in getting that communication to them and we closed the driveway too soon. They weren't ready for it. That was on our department.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Garcia, was that your understanding in your communication with the city?
A little, a little bit. This is why I put in the paper, because no understand, I'm speaking good English. This is why I put over there.
But, but did you, did you understand when you tore down the garage that you would not be able to build it?
No.
In the same manner?
No, because I only closed my driveway and everywhere. I walk in yesterday, on Sunday, only my driveway is closed, any other place. And fifty feet, every fifty feet is open. It's not make a difference, my, my house.
Unfortunately, we don't have Mr. and Mrs. Garcia's, one of their sons or daughter here. They speak fluent English, so obviously there's communication barrier, but the communication was relayed also to, uh, one of Eddie's sons, so we, they were present when we were there. But, again, the negotiation here is, Mr. and Mrs. Garcia would like to see some assistance because it was closed up without communication to help with concrete on the new garage. They don't have a problem building the garage to the south. It's, that's in a nutshell what they're looking for.
And engineering did, uh, uh, share that with Mrs. Garcia when we talked last week, that we would be willing to come forward. The cost for, uh, the removal and replacement for the old driveway was around thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. So, moving forward to do an even square footage, it came out roughly to about sixteen hundred dollars that we would put towards their new driveway because with going with this new garage, they would have to take out that access on the Highway twenty-two. So, from engineering standpoint, we just wanted them to understand, if we put the access back on Highway twenty-two like it was, it's going to have to come back out and, and be replaced as it is today for this new structure. So, in lieu of that, we were offering the same dollar amount, little bit more towards their new driveway. At that time, they, uh, had a proposal for us, um, to mitigate this that came out around seventeen thousand dollars. So, um, that we weren't in, in line with. We felt that we could put money towards what it would cost us to put it back the way it was to begin with, um, towards the new driveway. I'm not sure how well that was relayed, but that was what we shared with, uh, Mrs. Garcia, or I shared with Mrs. Garcia to try to mediate.
I have a question. We, uh, they no notify to my husband about the, close the sidewalk. So, when my husband is driving there, it's closed, so he's a little bit upset about the situation because we never get a letter or email or phone call about that sidewalk. And my husband, when he buy the house, we, we want to try to building the original plans, he buy the house and, um, nobody notifies that. That's why my husband is concerned because when we buy a house, we make plans for this side garage and now everything changed. Actually, I talked to Mrs. Loretta and she apologized because she never let us know about that situation and that's why we bring the case in front you because, uh, obviously my husband is not happy. Nobody notifies before the demolition, uh, we have these issues because maybe we have these issues, we never, you know, try to rebuilding the garage.
That's what I was going to ask, was when they came to demolish it, were they told they couldn't have the garage facing a certain direction?
No.
They, they were explained, or we explained that they could not be in that triangle. They could move the garage farther south and in order to do that and have it out of division triangle, they would have to, whether they rebuild the garage. I talked to Mrs., to Miss Marsha and, uh, the highway department is looking at safety concerns, so I, I'm sure that would have been a process, but it was possible, but we suggested definitely that it needed to be based itself, they couldn't build it in the same spot.
So, it would face south into the alley?
It'll face south into the alley, is how it has to be now. And that's all it's permitted now. They do have a return permit.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, yeah, but before that, nobody let us know. If we, my husband demolition the garage, what is the next? If we rebuilding, rebuilding the garage, in what side? That's why my husband is a little bit upset because nobody explained to him that little detail. It's in the south, inside, go to drive into the alley. So, that's why we came here because nobody let us know before he demo the garage.
It's not make a difference because here's my house fifty feet south, the other entryway, quite close my house driveway and here is open. It's not make a difference.
And after that, we get a lot of apologizes, but after, after, not before, before we try to rebuilding the house. Otherwise, we never demo the garage and maybe we just fix the way it is.
Only trying to fix it.
So, what you're saying is that had you known that, you would never have demoed the garage?
Excuse me?
You, you never would have demolished the garage?
If we, if we know that.
Lane.
We're just trying to look at, we don't have the plans in front of us, we don't have an overhead, so, I mean.
Is this the lot right here? Okay, so where's the garage now? That they tore down? It's already, it's already off of here?
Yep, that's right.
So, it was back here and it went that way?
Yeah, the driveway is up, right, right between.
Jason, this is where it was.
This, yeah, this is just south of Upentai, right? On third?
Yep, right before you get to the bridge.
Well, obviously, I think we need to investigate this a little more, so.
We're going to have to get back to you. We're going to have to do a little bit more digging into this and, and then we have your, your formal paperwork here, so we, we'll look at what we can, we can possibly do to assist you. Obviously, there was a lack of communication or some confusion.
Yeah, because this garage building and sixty year old now and by one year to go, change.
Okay. So, what, what we'll look at.
The original garage was attached to the house or not?
Yes.
Not now.
No, no, but before when we.
It was before though?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have somebody get back to you shortly.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening to us, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any concerns?
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. I'm Travis Wagon, I'm here representing Beauty Barcelona and Days Spa. I was inquiring about the previous, the existing code in, uh, in the city code about beer and wine licenses. Uh, it seems to be currently now that there's a beer only and we were interested in obtaining a beer and wine. And I don't know if, uh, if anybody here is familiar with why the wine portion had
I thought it was always beer and wine too.
It's not anymore.
I, I am not sure why it, it would have been, um, to be honest with you, I, I, to answer your question, I don't know. I don't know why that would have changed. I'll, I'll do a quick search here and see what I can locate online. If it did change, I, I don't know the circumstances of why it did.
I don't, I don't remember. Chief Osk, you remember us changing it?
Nobody can remember.
I don't remember any change there. I think at one point in time, it was misunderstood that it was a beer and wine ordinance, but I believe it was actually just a beer, um, permit, but maybe Mrs. Wanko could back it
I, I always thought it was beer and wine too.
They kind of just naturally go together. I mean, you know, I mean, if, if you can't sell, you know, hard alcoholic beverages, I mean, beer and wine's always been, I mean, we, at Pizza Ranch, we used to have a beer and wine license back in the day.
The one application that Travis did have said beer and wine, but then it updated to beer only.
Yeah, we just.
So, now if you pull it out, it's beer only.
Rita?
She doesn't.
We have, have a restaurant beer only. We still have that. And it used to be beer and wine, then we have, we had a fine, beer only, like us before.
Like barber shops and stuff, yeah, yeah.
And then like men's and hobo, so then we had this one with beer only, but you know, years ago, what year? You could be so concerned about, um, twenty more and older. Um, we had a request that's going to be coming in twenty twenty-nine, uh, for a high wear place, that would also have beer and wine. And outside, it's beer only. I mean, there was some issues with it had beer and wine, because like.
I mean, if you're serving beer, I mean, wine is.
Yeah, nowadays beer has a higher alcoholic content than a lot of things.
I, I think there was some concern back then with beer and wine together and wine.
Well, I think we have addressed that in nauseam about the separation wine and barber shops, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know why you'd be concerned about beer but not wine with minors.
Right.
So, let's, let's put this on the agenda for a future meeting to talk about this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
And we'll have, uh, uh, Mrs. Wanko look into it and Mr. Uh, or Chief Oskner look into it and Rita will do some research too. They're probably a good point to come.
You're obviously looking for beer and wine for the Beauty Salon, correct?
For the salon, for the spa, correct.
And that would spend a great number of years and beer is only seventy-five dollars. I know there is a certain, um, as yourself or whoever that wants to apply to beer, I know, is that right? Like when you, there are other cities that check and those are higher than what are one's.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into this.
Okay.
Mr. President, uh, sir, are you looking to sell this at your, at your spa place or, or give it away, basically?
Correct, um, part of the idea was to be, some of it be complimentary. People that choose a spa day that are going to spend a significant amount of time, that there would be, uh, you know, maybe a complimentary glass of wine. And then we know there were some issues there without, with being complimentary, that a license would still be required. Um, I know the previous owner had some issues in the past with doing so, she got it physically from the sheriff's department, so.
Yeah, if they're not selling it, then.
You, you would still have concerns as far as requirements, as far as obviously minors and so forth, the restrictions regarding that, but.
And we're okay with doing the license.
Attorney Wanko and, uh, we'll get back to the commission on that.
But, okay, I have a question. Is there certain restrictions then that we need, that they need to be aware of if they do complimentary and then sale too? So, if someone wants to. So if someone wants two glasses of wine or two drinks of beer?
I'm not aware of any restrictions as far as, basically, the concern would be minors distributing alcohol beverages, alcoholic beverages, but minors, that would be our concern.
We'll, we'll, we'll have staff dig into this and get you an answer.
Perfect.
So leave your, your number with Rita, so we have a point of contact.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone online? Anyone online have any comments? Anyone from the public? Not, we will close this portion of the agenda. And we will move back to the second job on our, Mrs. Nomenick, it's Industrial Environmental Tech.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. I have the job description as Environmental Pretreatment Coordinator. This is a new position for the Water Department, for utilities. This position would be responsible for ensuring that water users comply with city, state, and federal regulations. They will assist in the administration of all water quality, pretreatment, and regulatory compliance programs, including but not limited to drinking water quality, wastewater and pretreatment regulations, customer education, and response to citizens' concerns related to these programs. The job description scores out similar and will be placed in the same pay class as the chief water operator positions. City staff is asking for this new job description to be approved as presented. And city staff is also asking that this position be put into the 2021 budget so that we can begin recruiting for the position now with a 2021 start date.
Yeah, we have it listed as Industrial Environmental Tech on the agenda.
Yeah, I think the intent with Mr. Stack was Environmental Pretreatment Coordinator.
Okay, and that's what, if you open it actually up, that's what it says?
Yeah.
The job description is coordinator. Coordinator, yeah. Mrs. Carlson, is this another budget-neutral position?
Correct, President Decker, with the revenues, and it's also the same amount as what the chief was when we had it in the budget process of around 83, and that includes benefits.
I'm sure finding someone will be the same challenge. Okay.
You don't have any friends for this one, Mr. Stack?
You're giving him a lot of credit for all these friends he's.
Yeah.
I don't have any friends on this one that I, Commissioner, um... So, Oderman, I, I don't have anyone on this one. I, I don't know, maybe I'll have to start looking a little bit more, so.
Start socializing.
But this one will be a little more difficult.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Stack or Mrs. Zurov or Mrs. Nomenick on this position?
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion, questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
I guess it was, it was Mr. Frederick, right? That, yeah, you get, okay, I'll start, start over again. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on this job position. We'll move into public safety. Chief Dossinger, you have a special event permits?
Mr. President, members of the commission. At the last commission workshop that was held on October 20th, the discussion was held regarding the moratorium of special event permits in reference to the COVID-19 pandemic. A direction given to city staff at that time was to extend it another two weeks. City staff is looking for direction on how you would like to continue on. Would you like to continue the moratorium on special event permits? Or would you like to end it? Looking for direction on how you'd like to proceed with until the end of the year regarding that.
Besides the, well, I guess we don't close off the streets for the, the Women's Day here coming up. That's just shop to shop. There, is there anything on the horizon that people are asking for, for large events?
I haven't seen anything brought forward to my desk regarding that. I think other entities are changing the process, doing a lot of virtual stuff, other things. So currently, I'm not aware of anything other than the charity ball at the hospital, but I believe they made changes, right, to their process.
The charity ball is virtual only, no?
Right. I wouldn't be opposed to, to extending it, but tying it to the color, too, like we did with the other moratorium.
I think that's a good idea.
I mean, if we come off, we come off yellow, I, I mean, I'm still gonna caution the public, you have to be responsible when you're, when, in your after-work activities, especially people in healthcare. Every day, what you do at night is affecting the people you take care of, so. But I'm, like I said, I'm not opposed to attaching this to our, our color coding. And as long as we're in yellow or red, I mean, orange or red, I would say we, we have the moratorium on our special event permits. But if we come back yellow, then it comes off. I don't know that we. I mean, we're tracking, you know, we had one spike last week. But most of the time, I think we're right in the teens, low twenties.
It's 6.77% on our positivity rate. I mean, we're, there's a, there's a high likelihood that we could come out of orange here in the next couple of weeks. I, I like that idea, I think it's a good idea. That way, if we do float back into orange for whatever reason, this would go back into effect. And I think the thing that the moratorium does is that it, those people that do hold the event, it's at the front of their mind on, hey, we need to do this in a responsible way. Like Trinity Fall Gala, I think, is a good example of that, where they moved that event into four different larger spaces at Trinity, as opposed to having a large event of, you know, 200-some people in their gym. They were able to move it out into four different spaces of 50 or less. So I think this moratorium forces people to think about how they're gonna conduct their event and whether or not they're going to. And obviously, at the hospital, we decided to go virtual only. But as long as we're in orange, I think it's a good, but, yeah, I, I love the idea of it, it going in, in and out of effect, depending on the color.
I think we're making some progress. I mean, we're down to around 200 active cases. I think that's about the lowest we've been in for a while, so.
So this moratorium came out of the Stark County Planning.
COVID. Yeah, the COVID coalition.
And, and is there any recommendations or anything coming from that coalition that we should be aware of in this? I mean, I'm assuming that they want us to keep going with this, but just that it came from there. Is there any recommendation?
Correct. Their recommendation would be for us to continue the, the special event moratorium. And they feel that that has definitely helped moving forward.
We'll see if there's a spike after Halloween. I know there was a few events, indoor events, so we'll see how that went.
Yeah, we look like, we're like the good kids in the state right now. If you look at the, if you look at the map.
Except for Slope County, but.
Yeah.
So is that a, that's something we need to put into as a motion to tie it to the color coding?
Yes, President Decker.
I'd look for a motion on the moratorium to be attached to our county's code.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion on the moratorium by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions, comments for staff? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have no items in engineering this evening. We'll move into public works. Mr. Zurov, you have a fee schedule change.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commission. The first item I have is Marathon Refinery has changed from a crude oil to renewable fuels refining, which requires an increase in their wastewater base flow rate. Wastewater charges outside the city limit are based on equivalent domestic unit, where one domestic unit equals 5,000 gallons a month. The refinery EDU base was previously 1,314, which was based off of 150 gallons a minute. Since changing to the renewable diesel, their flows are now averaging 278 gallons per minute or 2,402 EDUs, equivalent well, dwelling units. This will equal monthly sewer base rate of $42,155.10 plus the standard usage rate of $2.15 per thousand gallons. Public work staff recommends increasing Marathon Refinery Sewer Base Rate to 2402 EDUs at the outside city limit, non-residential, special customer rate of $17.55 per EDU. I know I went through that fairly fast, but it, it's basically 2,402 equivalent residential units. And our base rates are based off equivalent domestic dwelling units. And they have just recently changed from the crude oil to the renewable diesel. So right now, they are producing 278 gallons a minute in our wastewater flow.
Have they been contacted about this increase?
Yes. Mr. Stack has, has contacted with, with them. We've had multiple discussions for probably two years on this regarding penals, base rates, and everything. So they're very, very well aware of, of the rates and the change in EDUs.
They're, they're on board. We're not gonna be hearing from somebody out there.
No, they're well, well.
They get it for the first bill.
Before they even did their refinery changes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Zurov or Mr. Stack on this fee schedule change for the Marathon Refinery? Is that the official name out there? Is it still Marathon Refinery? Any comments or questions for the staff? Not, I look for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the fee schedule change by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mrs. Zurov, you have a fee schedule for the Dickinson Trail Terminal.
That should say rail, I'm sorry, Dickinson Rail Terminal. This, this is, is part of the Marathon Refinery. It's the Dickinson Rail Terminal just prior to the refinery, or just north of the refinery. They required some connection for reuse water and a wastewater connection. So this is a, a new account with the Dickinson Rail Terminal. And so we wanted to get this in our fee schedule also. They've accept, they've requested an acceptance of a wastewater base flow rate, ton gallons a minute, which will put them in it at about 86 equivalent domestic units. This will equal a monthly sewer base of $1,509.30 plus the standard usage rate of $2.15 per thousand. Again, this is the outside city limit, non-residential customer rate of $17.55 per EDU. And this is based off what they requested for flow. And all aware of that communication for the last year or so on that, on this project.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Any questions for staff on this fee schedule change? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the fee schedule for the Dickinson Rail Terminal.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is planning and zoning. Planning Director Hadley, you have a final plat for the Waichenko subdivision.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commission. This item was heard on October 21st at the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a two-lot subdivision in the ETZ. It's along 20th Street Southeast and 110th Avenue Southwest. Two lots, one that's five acres and one that's 149 approximately. The, the property, the entire area there is owned by a family. And the intent of this first lot is to construct a home. It does allow them to move forward and possibly do irregular plats down the road. The applicant and his representative is here. One of the standard conditions that we have is dedications, as you know. We've talked about those a number of times in the last number of months. There is a condition on this one as well. There's some discussion, I think, that between city engineering and then also the applicant that they might wanna discuss a little further. If you're so inclined, allow them to talk in front of you. The planning commission approved this, recommended approval, and staff would recommend approval with engineering concurrence on dedications.
Any concerns from engineering?
President Decker, Commissioners. Engineering staff requested right-of-way in the amounts that go along with the comp plan for these. We have a little disagreement as to what those distances are. For the, for what's proposed and shown in this plat, those match what's written in our codes for an urban section. Although, engineering feels that the north-south route would develop at some point in the future as a rural section based on what is currently there for utility lines. So we were asking for the additional right-of-way that matches that corridor with the comp plan for a rural section. So what's before you on the plat and what was approved at PNC was, I believe that's 40 foot on the east-west and 50 on the north-south. What engineering was asking for was 75 feet on the north-south to go with that rural section. So in talking with the applicant's representative, they wanted to bring forward what they had shared at PNC. Depending on your thoughts moving forward with this, since engineering doesn't agree. If your thoughts are to approve, then it would go forward. If your thoughts are that we follow along with the engineering recommendations, then engineering asks that you table this item instead of denying it. Denying it would put it back at square one, and they would have to start all over. But if we'd table it, we would be able to back off, have some more discussion, and bring it back forward.
So we approved it at 40 at PNC?
I believe what got approved was this final plat, the middle, and then the comment was to get engineering approval to come forward for this final plat at commission.
If I could jump in, Mr. President. Typically, these are moving, evolving plats as they go through our process. They come through PZ, there's some discussion on dedication. And I, I think the applicant and his representatives, I think even at the PZ meeting, I, I made an effort to make sure that that was noted. Sometimes that isn't finalized until we get to right before this process. And this just literally, this discussion just came up the last couple of days, I guess. So, you know, here we are. I think Ms. Marshick has a, has a good solution for the east side that she talked about with the applicant, I believe. You know, we, we are transitioning and, and, you know, it's difficult on the, the existing engineering staff. You know, we are past city engineer. He and I worked together on a number of these and allowed, city engineer has full discretion to allow, disallow. to allow, disallow, make it a little more, less dedication than what we might need, given the fact of where it is. And Mr. Kubis did that on a regular basis, and sometimes we actually did that on a easement. We've taken a little different philosophy in moving forward from the standpoint of following our comprehensive plan and just for the sake of being consistent. And so I think you've noticed that in the last number of months, all of the plats that have gone through basically have this requirement on it. So that's where we are today, and that's kind of the history of it. But it is a transition. So, you know, Ms. Marshick wasn't involved in that process beforehand?
I would like to add to that. We have taken some direction differently on the last, in the last few months. So for instance, instead of requiring the largest amount based on what's shown in the comp plan for the east-west route, because of the development to the west, this road will more than likely develop as an urban section because of all the residential that's to the west of here. So we were okay with allowing the 40-foot for this section. However, based on what's out there for the north-south route, we still feel that because of the large utility pools and the utility corridor, when this does develop some point down the line, it will need to be a rural section with ditches. And because of that, we need the wider right-of-way. We did a similar item on a recent plat over on 50th that was south of the interstate. That, if we would have looked at it as a rural section, we'd have requested a larger chunk of right-of-way, but we matched what was plotted already to the north for 50th, which was, I believe, a 50-foot right-of-way with an additional 10-foot easement. So we are making some discretionary adjustments based between rural and urban sections, but we are following what's in our comprehensive plan, and that's the guide that we've been using as these come forward.
Mr. Wytenko, were you aware of this before, when you first filed this, with the easements? Was he made aware?
I don't remember this, I don't remember any conversation.
I don't either. I even asked Mr. Wytenko to step up if he had any comments or concerns at the last meeting, so.
Yeah, no, not at all. In fact, I did send several emails to city staff to make sure that things were in order for not only the previous meeting, planning and zoning, but for this meeting. And I didn't get response back for quite some time after numerous emails. And finally, three days ago maybe, I got a response back with changes to what we originally had approved in the previous meeting.
Mr. Schrank, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Andrew Schrank with Highlands Engineering. We've been working with Mr. Wytenko on this subdivision. We've been providing the 40 feet and the 50 feet of right-of-way for these roads respectively, which we feel meets your comprehensive plan. It meets an urban section. What engineering staff is requesting is a rural street section, so a street with ditches. We feel that if this area ever gets to the point where it's going to require that 150 feet of right-of-way, this is going to be urbanized, it's going to be annexed, you're going to want sidewalks, you're going to want curb and gutter. With the 50 feet that he is providing, you can build a rural section. It may not meet your minor arterial rural section, but most of our county roads are built in a 66-foot right-of-way for local county roads. So long-term planning, if this ever gets to the point where you're building a minor arterial, our opinion, this will be annexed. You'll have development miles south, miles east of here. You'll want this to be an urbanized area, and it does meet the intent of your code, in our opinion. We've worked on several other plats recently that have had a similar minor arterial right-of-way. West Willard, Third subdivision, just came forward here in the last few minutes, had a minor arterial dedication of 50 feet in the ETZ. There was a plat a half-mile south of here that has only provided 33 feet of right-of-way. That was approved in the last year. So he's going above and beyond the precedence that has been set to the south. He's matching what has been required for subdivisions to the west. We feel it still meets what's required.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Schrank or Mr. Wytenko?
I guess one last thing if I may add too. This is within a mile of Highway 22, so you have a major, major street just a mile west of here already, where we feel that the timeframe of this minor arterial happening is so far down the road, it's premature at this point to take that much right-of-way. He's already dedicating 5.4 acres. That's larger than he's going to own for his house. So he's already doing a substantial dedication.
Commissioners, what are your feelings? I mean, I tend to agree with Mr. Schrank. I mean, we've already set a precedent and taken less in other areas, but.
I would agree.
I mean, I know where this property's at. I mean, we're talking past my lifetime and maybe a lot of people's lifetimes before that gets brought into the city, so.
Unless there's an absolute population boom, and then we've got a lot of other bigger problems than this right-of-way.
What concerns me is us as a city again looking like we are not on the ball and not, this should not have come to planning and zoning unless this, that they were aware of this. And I'm fine as is. We have a plat in front of us. That's my opinion. Planning and zoning approved it the way it is also, so. There was zero comments. There was none. At the planning and zoning meeting on this, so. Thought I'd make a motion to approve it. A motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further comments, questions? This is Resolution 39-2020. It is the final plat of the Wytenko subdivision with a motion to approve as is. Any further comments or questions? Three and none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobelak.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item eight has been pulled. Moving into the commission section. Commissioners, do you have anything?
I do. I have one topic. I've been contacted by a couple people in town about lighting on the trail up on 21st and 10th. And I think it's because they see the beautiful lighting that we have over by the Interstate Exchange now. And so they, there's just some people that I know that are running over there that said it's very dark and scary. And so I've been kind of reaching out to some people to find out more about that and where the Trails Committee is. And it sounds like that, I don't, I don't know exactly. Jason, are you on the Trails Committee or who's our commissioner on the Trails Committee?
I'm on there, but we have not met since before Mr. Kubis passed away, so it's been a long time.
I'm on the committee also, and we haven't met. I did see Mr. Kramer and another, the board president of the, or member of the Rec Committee at the ribbon cutting on that trail. Anyway, I did mention that we should have another trail meeting. I guess one of the things that was discussed on that trail specifically is the cost of lights at the time were not part of that project.
The one up on 21st?
21st and 10th, yeah. That was, it was not part of the project. It got to be way over the cost. I know when we looked at it, too, the possibility of putting some fixtures off the existing light poles, that was discussed by city administrator at the time with, I believe it's Rough Rider that has those lines, about putting some lamps off the existing wooden poles, that that might be an opportunity without expensive dollars. But I guess that's all I know about it.
Okay. Well, so just, yeah, and I didn't know who was on the Trails Committee, but I wanted to make sure it was brought up and, you know, made aware that, I've gotten compliments on that trail before because I know lots of people were scared to run on 21st, since they like the trail. But now, you know, just the days are short. And so lighting would be, you know, above and beyond, but it would be great to have. And so I wanted to just bring that up, and I didn't know where to go with it, so I thought here was the place to go with that.
And I don't really know who's taking over heading up the Trails Committee. I mean, Mr. Kubis facilitated those meetings in the past, so I don't know if that torch has been passed to anyone or.
Commissioner Frederick, I had just had a couple discussions with Commissioner Walla and Commissioner Sobelak, asking these questions and bringing forward some ideas with the Trail Committee. And I had sat in for Mr. Kubis quite a while ago.
I remember that.
So staff and I are looking to find that contact list, and it is on our agenda to reach out to everybody that's on that list and try to set up a meeting in November.
Since we're talking about trails, can I ask one more?
Ask away.
So as we were running on 30th or the Business Loop or Truck Route, whatever you call it over there, so it ends a block after Stanford, Fairway Street, the path. That's where the sidewalk in that ends. Is there a plan to continue that, to connect the south side? Because if you're out there running and then all of a sudden you're like, oh, and then you don't want to take that curve in the dark.
So I know at one point that was on the list to make that connection from there over to State Avenue. I believe it got put on hold because with working for the Phase Two of the Crooked Crane Trail, if the intended route doesn't work, we're looking at an alternate route that would connect the Crooked Crane Trail over along Highway 10 to the Business Loop and would make that connection. So it's being looked at here in the future. We're just not sure how it's going to be approached yet.
I just won't go that way, though. Can't help you till we get there, sorry.
No, that's all right. We just turned around.
Okay. Anything else from commissioners? I'll wait until everybody's finished, so.
No, I'm through. I just, yeah, wanted to bring it up and.
Mr. Oderman, nothing? Okay.
Nobody, nothing. Thank you.
One, and I think Mrs. Zurov's aware of this, there's concern, and Mr. Quam's aware of this by a citizen, how the city is caring for their trees.
Today's email, yes.
Yes.
We approached that right away. Mr. Clem went down there. He assured me that we're not torturing any trees downtown. The, you know, it's been on our project list a long time to get some of these trees trimmed downtown, so we are, we were, started that this week. And I was emailed about us trimming the trees improperly, but Mr. Clem reassured me that we are just trying to trim the trees so that our sweepers can get and clean the areas along the curb and that we are not having the downtown trees.
And I was contacted by someone else also, and they were concerned about trees not being trimmed. So it goes both ways, because we have a lot of, in our right-of-way, some overgrown trees.
And the plan is to try to get those done as soon this fall, that all the downtown trees trimmed up. So we started working on it.
And then a second thing, was contacted by an individual from the state wanting to know if Dickinson wanted to be part of a blue zone. I think Mr. Hadley, Jana, okay, is blue zone. If we wanted to participate, there's some funding dollars for walkability, path extensions. But it's coming out of the Health Department. And my feelings is it's probably coming from COVID dollars. So I, as I spoke to the health official, I said, as long as there are no, you know, hidden requirements for us accepting any kind of dollars, I would not be opposed to being part of that. I just wanted to get the commissioners' feelings. So, you know, like, Mr. Hadley can participate in the upcoming, they're going to do four-city unveiling online of what they've done. And I guess we just instruct him to bring back a recommendation to us, and they just need to know by, is it by the second week in November, if we wanted to participate in this. And like I said, as long as there's no hidden caveats to the dollars. Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it's, Mr. President.
I believe there is?
I believe it's the second week in November. And then it's more, it deals with your, your community's ability to not only provide good, healthy environments, but also mental health. And, you know, it kind of goes into some other, some other issues that, why, you know, why Dickinson, honestly, one of the comments she made was Dickinson has done a pretty good job as far as moving forward in the last few years in providing some of that. And then it's a study that would actually include the public that they're involved in as well. And so, yeah, I think it's definitely worthwhile to look at.
And when I talked to her, she was completely unaware of our Crooked Crane Trail system and what we were planning on doing and that, the benefit of that. And she thinks we might fall in line with connectors. And so I would, I would say they just pursue that, Mr. Hadley, and get back a report to us on that.
Sure will. Thank you.
The last issue is, I'd like to formally make the announcement that we have signed a signed contract with the new city administrator. And it is Lieutenant Colonel Retired Brian Winningham. He will be reporting to us the first week of December. I'm correct, you can correct me anytime if I'm wrong here in this contract, Mrs. Nomenek, but November 30th, first week into December, they'll be moving from California to us here. Mr. Winningham is retired from the United States Army, and he has a very extensive bio. I will not go through all of that, but I'm sure it will be posted shortly. And he has served all over the world. He has a very extensive background, not only in the military, but also working as Legislative Affairs Officer on Capitol Hill for Congressman. He most recently served as a tribal administrator with the Tulie River Tribe out of California. And he had a nine-member tribal council there, so he is used to working with a lot of different unique individuals, coming from a lot of different perspectives. And he is coming to us with a family, and they're, they have one child that's still at home. So he has three adult children and one child that's still at home. And when I spoke to him recently, he was moving his son to Houston, who had just gotten out of the Army and taken a job as a police officer. So he is very excited to come to Dickinson, I can tell you that. Recently received an email, and I think other commissioners have also. He wants to hit the ground running. He will be interacting with staff here shortly. Did give him permission to start doing that. So even though he won't be here physically, he will be contacting staff. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Winningham and his family to our community, and hopefully we can get him around and get him introduced to everybody promptly. Getting here, I don't know, that first week of December, let's hope that the weather is cooperative, so. But I'm excited to have Mr. Winningham aboard. And like I said, we'll post his bio online. It's very extensive, and he's got an interesting background, so. Anything else, commissioners? Now I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.